I would love, like to call the March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular board meeting to order at six o'clock P. M. All right, Tucker Green is going to give our invocation. Out of respect, would you please stand for the invocation?
Here now he is, let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the students and staff here in Pickens County schools. Lord, we ask you, you guide us, give us wisdom. We go in the way you see fit. Lord, we ask for your children, protection over all, of our students, our staff, our community. Protect them, be with them, Lord, in the days ahead. All these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Would you please continue standing as Mr. Smith leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make mine.
Mr. Smith makes that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Gartrill makes that second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote is five oh. The agenda has been approved. All right, Ms. Destiny Shug will make a presentation for Georgia School Board Appreciation Week.
Pickens County School District is honoring and recognizing its elected officials by participating in an annual statewide appreciation week sponsored by the Georgia School Boards Association. School systems across Georgia are celebrating their boards of education after a proclamation by Governor Brian Kemp naming March fourteenth through eighteenth the week for recognition. Pickens County Board members support learning initiatives in the district and work to provide students and teachers all the resources needed to be as successful as possible. Additionally, the Pickens County Board of Education is debt-free and has continued to decrease the education portion of the military for many consecutive years. The five-member board includes Chairwoman Sue Finley, who is in year one of her second four-year term, Vice Chairman Thomas Gartrill, who is in year one of his first term, Tucker Green, who will complete his first four-year term in December, Steve Smith, who will also complete his four-year term in December, and Aaron Holland, who will complete at the end of the year the four-year term for the vacancy of District Two. Board members, board member responsibilities are to set district policies, employ personnel, ensure there are adequate facilities and equipment, provide for transportation services, and disburse school funds. It takes a dedicated understanding and collaborative board to meet the needs of students and staff in Pickens County. We cannot ask for more when it comes to a board, and we are thankful for their dedication to our students, staff, and community. And we rely upon their encouragement and support to make Pickens County schools one of the best school systems in the state. In addition to regular monthly meetings and planning sessions, school board members are required to complete several hours of training each year according to state standards. They also attend conferences around the state and represent their districts at various county events. The responsibilities of a board member do not begin and end with regular or call board meetings. It is a twenty-four-hour, seven-days-a-week responsibility. On behalf of Superintendent Young, our students and staff, we say thank you for putting the children's needs first. We appreciate all you do that allows teachers to teach and students to learn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
At this time, I have certificates that I would like to present. Ms. Sue Finley?
Thank you so much. If the rest of you want to come around.
We also have gifts and cards from the schools that are up here for you. Thank you. Mr. Tucker Green?
All right, look, let's get a picture of y'all. Two of y'all get on that side of the table, and then two would be on the middle. Please. Does he wipe anything? Yeah, bye.
Thank you so much.
You can take your gifts after, maybe if you want. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As we talk about school board appreciation, I was, I felt very appreciated this afternoon, and this is a grandmother's right to embarrass her grandchildren in public. I'll just take this opportunity. I felt very appreciated. Children, children listen more than we know sometimes, and I had a tremendous conversation with my grandson Miles, who is an up-and-coming board member. And he's standing in the back of the room here tonight because he wanted to listen. He has been watching some of the videos, and he asked me some wonderful scaffolding questions today in the car, and tremendous questions. And I would give him an answer, and he wouldn't let me off the hook. He just kept saying, but then if that's the case, then why this and why that? And really, really asked some good questions, and I was very proud of him. And I think we have a lot of other young people in this county who would have some good questions as well, given the opportunity. So I'm very excited about the young people in this county, and I know that the future is bright. The future is bright, and it makes me very excited to be a board member, and thank you very much for giving me that opportunity. All right, Mr. Superintendent, time for some reports.
All right, Madam Chair, we will start with our CFO, Ms. Amy Smith, to give us our financial updates.
She's a lot taller than I am. Thank you, Mr. Young. Our first report is for our general fund. We've collected seventy-three point five-three percent of our budgeted revenue in our general fund through the end of February two thousand and twenty-two. We have expended fifty-two point three-four percent of our approved budgeted expenditures. Just remind you, don't get too excited when you see those numbers. We double up, we triple up on those payroll numbers in June. So yes, those expenditure numbers are very low, but just always remind you, it's coming. We will spend it. Miss Markie, if you'll scroll to the next section. Fund one fifty consolidation of funds. Remind you that this is a combination of general fund and some federal funds. This reflects the expenditures and transfers to date. And if you'll continue, debt service, of course, is zero. We have no debt at this time. Capital projects, capital outlays, SPOST. SPOST revenue for the month of February two thousand and twenty-two is five hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Interest earned is one thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Expenditures totaled five hundred eighty-nine thousand, fifty dollars and thirty-five cents, and the month-end SPOST balance was nine million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars and thirteen cents. Just to let you know, too, the February payment was our first payment from SPOST six. So we have collected all our monies that I'm aware of from SPOST five. We will, the money's in the bank, other than this five hundred ninety-three thousand are all SPOST five, so we will continue keeping those two accounts separate, tracking each SPOST as we are supposed to, according to the Georgia Department of Education. Our last area down there at the bottom is our special revenue funds. Those are school food, federal grants, those items. We have collected forty-eight point four-one percent of our budgeted revenue and expended fifty-eight point five-eight percent of our budgeted expenditures. Remind you, too, most of these items are pull grants, which means we have to spend the money first before we get a reimbursement from the state. Y'all have any questions on those reports? We will have Georgia Department of Audits on-site tomorrow. We are already in our FY twenty-one audit. We've been working with them a little over a week, virtually. They'll be on-site with us. Don't know if they're going to just be here tomorrow, if it might go into next week. They will be conducting fraud interviews. This is a normal process, so a board member could be called to do an interview. Many of our staff are involved in this, especially any financial staff, but the normal procedures, but they'll be here just to do their normal routine thing. If you happen to see some people you don't normally see in our building, they'll be downstairs with us most of the day. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Operations and construction update from Mr. Stacy Gilen. Stacy's going to go ahead, there's a couple of action items later on in the agenda. Stacy's going to go ahead and talk to you about those as well as part of his presentation.
It was good to get to talk with y'all last Friday during the, your work session. I think that was a good thing, we could sit down and go through some stuff that we always need to talk about at this time of year, so I enjoyed that one. Mainly, we're in the process now of getting ready for the summer, maintenance projects and putting all that stuff together, and all the schools have already sent us some informational stuff they want to do, some changing classrooms around, furniture, and that kind of stuff. We actually had a major water main break at the high school last, end of last week. It did break, it's leaking. Eight-inch main feeds a fire suppression system in the building, so that's been an all-week deal. If you went by there, you saw a big hole dug and people about four feet down to the ground trying to get this thing fixed, but we got it back up and running today. The fire protection system is back full operational now. The alarm system and all still work, but you just wouldn't have had a sprinkler system at the time that this was down, which we still evacuate the building in about twenty seconds when we have a drill or a minute and twenty seconds, so we'd get everybody out. We were still safe. And the fire department and the county was on notice, they knew that it was going on. We made a lot of repairs in the last week or two on, we had some roof leaks that were given us fits, we couldn't figure out what they were, and it ended up being inside the rooftop units on the A.C. So we put the plumber and the roofers and David together, and started going through them one at a time. We fixed some major things going on, so I think we've, we've come up with a, a better plan on how we can attack some of these sometime. That was, we've had some of them a couple of years, we just, we'd patch them, and they just would keep coming back, coming back, and coming back. Transportation, we're currently, oh, all of our maintenance staff's back at work, including me. Some of us had some surgeries, and some of us had some major sicknesses, but we're all back at work with full steam ahead, so we're ready to go and get ready for graduation. That's around the corner. We're currently holding our first entry-level driver training class with new state rules and regs and the Federal Motor Carrier Association regulations. Our trainers are working hard to do this the right way, and we've trained them several times on this, and they're doing a good job. I think it's going to go well, and maybe it's not going to be as convoluted and hard as we thought when we first were approached about all this. So we'll see how this first one goes, and we'll tweak and make it a little easier next time. We're in the midst of National School Breakfast Week this week, September eleventh. The theme this year is Take Off with School Breakfast, and Bess is proud to promote the super-powered school breakfast meals and invite students to take and join in in this. She's, she wants to report that, how important school lunch and breakfast is, and it's free. Everybody can get it free now, so it's a great deal, and we need to take advantage of this, and she's promoting it really hard to get these kids to come and eat with us. We won a Google Award last week through nutrition. The high school cafe posted a picture on the national site of the school national tray of the week campaign, and it has, they do it with the food, the how it's laid out and how it looks, color, fruit, all this stuff, and we won, we won that week's drawings or the, that week's nominations. So it was, it was really interesting to see. If you go on the Facebook site, you can see it, see the tray. It was, it was interesting. It was neat. Mr. Young was talking about, I got a couple of action items coming up later, or three, and we talked about them the other day, the purchase of school buses. It's six buses, a hundred twelve thousand apiece, going with Thomas Bus this year, which is a, is a, is a change, but it's basically, it's the same motor transmission, rear end brakes, everything that's major is the same. We're excited. We think it's going to be a good change for us, and it's saving us a lot of money. The next one will be the approval for the junior high greenhouse, and it's on the agenda for two hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars. I was a little taken back by the price, but checking around and calling other schools that's doing this now, and that's the going rate. It's just what it is. The economy's got us in a, in a place that's not good. We will be getting forty-eight thousand dollars back from the ag, from the ag, junior high ag building. This can just roll over into this as part of, so it's not as big a hit as it could be.
Basically, what is, what is the savings, the bottom-line savings on these buses, making use of this?
Forty-two thousand, and it'll take about five thousand dollars to stock the parts we'll need to stock, so thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars savings overall. We feel like it's going to be a good move, and it, it puts the other people on notice that they need to get right with us, you know, if they want to keep our business, and we, we just felt like it was important to put it out this year to see what was going to happen with it. And we're excited. We went to drainings last week. We went to their manufacturing plant and looked at it, and I got four good guys in the shop, and they all were excited about it, and they thought it was the best move. So you got to go with the people that's got to take care of it and knows what's going on, too. Pickens High School stadium repair, we're going to be removing all the old seats on the stadium that are falling apart, the plastic seats, they're, they're in disrepair. Can't get parts for them. We will be taking all the old caulk out, putting new caulk in, new backer rod. We're going to fill all, fill the cracks now. We have a major wash problem going on through the stadium out to the track. We're trying to stop that water flow out. We're, we've got some ideas where it's coming from, but we're going to do all that. Then we're going to fill and paint the concrete with an epoxy-based paint. It's traction, it has really good traction. We get a little section for a test, and it's really good. You're not going to slip and slide on. Should preserve the stadium, the concrete's deteriorating, it's fixing too. If we don't do something now, later it's going to be a major expense to fix it, so that's what I wanted to try to do that before graduation. It was just looking so nasty and so bad, I wanted to see if we could get that going. We talked about that, and I showed you some pictures the other day of what was going on. At the high school ag facility, Martha, I think she's got us some pictures to look at, the progress pictures. Not a lot, you can tell now, a lot of things happening underground right now, so we do have the base down, we do have the curb and gutter down. That's, that was a view, this is a view from the, the field house looking out. The other one was, I think, a view from the far end looking back, so it's going to be, it's going to be something to see, and it's going to be something to be proud of for this ag department, this system, so. Any questions?
Stacy, with, with the fuel cost, how's that affecting?
Good question. Actually, actually, day before yesterday, Tracy threw two pieces of paper down, and I actually brought them. He, he said, look at this. March the eleventh of two thousand and twenty-one, we bought eight thousand gallons, which is a load for our system, of diesel, nineteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars. It was two dollars and forty-six cents a gallon. March this year, March the third, instead of the eleventh, we bought seven thousand gallons of diesel and one thousand gallon of gasoline. The diesel was four-ten a gallon at twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars. It's basically doubled since this time last year. So, you know, we, we try to cover ourselves in the budget because we know that can happen, and so we're usually high on the end of fuel. I don't know how high we, I don't know, we were doubled, so I'm just glad it's just now hit, so if we go into the new budget, we may need to make sure we're covered next year, so it's scary.
I can tell you, it's not going to be a tremendous help, but the state is going to temporarily suspend that fuel tax. I think it's twenty-nine cents on the gallon gas, and I think diesel's thirty-seven cents. Out, from what I've heard, I think it's probably going to happen in the next week or two.
That would have saved us twenty-two hundred dollars just on this line.
They inserted that in another bill this week to expedite the process, and I was told a vote may come next Thursday.
The diesel tax is thirty-two cents a gallon, I think, and the, according to this, and the gas tax is twenty-nine cents a gallon, so it would have saved us that.
Yeah, I think, I suspect that'll happen in the next two weeks or so.
How long does the load last, just in a normal?
This time of year, we get it down every month, but, you know, you get to summer, and when you're first starting up, you miss several months there, you not having to get any gas or something.
I think we all hope that it goes down very slowly.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gilton.
Thank you, Stacy. Our next update on dual enrollment and the requirements of that is Mr. Bell, who wants to talk to the board about some changes to dual enrollment that will affect some of our practices.
Thank you, Mr. Young, for coming. The board, I appreciate you letting me come and speak. I'm excited to be here tonight. I think you'll get some interesting take on dual enrollment and what's taking place in Pickens County with dual enrollment. I was going to cover a little bit, I'm not going to get into a whole lot or real deep in regulations and stuff like that, because I know me, yeah, I can speak for a long time, and I won't do that to you. But normally, when we're talking about dual enrollment, it's been split up, sorted into groups, option A and option B, and, and option B becoming, you know, more of the, the talk that people are scratching their head over and stuff like that. Option A is, is a conventional route of dual enrollment. It's what we all know as dual enrollment, students can go and get, you know, college credits and their high school credits at the same time. That's been going on for a long time, and, and it's common, it's common practice for that to happen, but we've seen a lot of changes in that as far as participation here recently, and, and with some changes on the state level over the past, you know, seven or eight years. There's a, there's a thirty-hour funding cap on that, so students who once could get unlimited number of college credits through option A, they're limited now to thirty credit hours, which is still, you know, if it's a three-credit hour course, that's still ten credits, so that's a year of college, basically, thirty credit hours. So that's still a really good thing to take advantage of. Option B is, is the term now that, you know, there's a lot of questions about it, and, and it's basically set up as just an alternate path to graduation. So students can choose option B, they take fewer credits at the high school, they're not, they're not bound to the same credit requirements that the state and/or local, such as we have here. They fall outside that category, and in order to, when they, when they take the fewer credits, they have to go to a technical college and, or they can do it at any college, but you have to complete an associate degree, a diploma program, or in some cases, just two technical certificates. If a program offers certificates, there are certificates that's available, and all these are not just any by choice, these are approved by the state of Georgia, and, and when you're going after their certificates, a lot of times we may have some senior or upcoming seniors, it may be, or should be upcoming seniors, maybe behind no credits, and, and a lot of times, we all know that students, if they get behind, you know, they're looking at either withdrawing, leaving education altogether, and in some cases, if they've met their high school requirements, these would be good candidates to get to technical college, get them two certificates, get them some skilled trades their last year, and allow them to graduate on time. So that's a, I, I call it somewhat of a savior for some of these students, and, and as y'all know, you know, recently, pre, post-COVID, we've seen an, an increase in students leaving the system. So, so our, our numbers have went down, and, and, you know, obviously, I don't get to see, and we don't get to talk to these students a lot of times, and, you know, I'm always wondering, would this student be better served if we could get them in the option B program and get them some skilled trades before they, you know, withdrew or didn't go into education somewhere else? So, so option B's really good. There is a lot of regulations behind it, schools are sort of scared of it, and I, I just took a lock into that program, and I guess just because of my affiliation, you know, for so long with Chatham Tech, it works really easy for us and the students we have here. It's a great, a great plan. It also subject to thirty hours of funding cap, but there are some, there's additional money there with those students if they be. All right, so it is, they, typically, a student goes into option B, they're not going to go into a four-year college right out of school because they're not really getting the high school requirements they need to get into four-year colleges. So it's sort of a trade-off for students who know that they, you know, this is the career they want to go in, and, and this is available through the technical college, and, and it just allows them an alternate method of graduation. And, you know, when I was coming through Pickens High School, they didn't call it option B, but this is what I did. You know, I was able to graduate Pickens Tech at that time in high school at the same time with my peers, and it was absolutely the best decision I ever made. So when I talk to these students, and, and I knew what I wanted to do as a freshman in high school, there was no questioning. So when students come to me now and they're interested in this, I take them serious when they say, this is what I want to do, and I try to get them on, on path to do that. And, and when, like, with that thirty-hour credit cap on these, with these students, they can become eligible at that point for, to use their HOPE grant, and then in cases to where the state has deemed a program, a high-demand program, and most, all of our technical programs are high-demand welding, automotive, auto collision, that the state has deemed, you know, needful of these, of these programs, so they apply, they would qualify for HOPE Career Grant, which is additional money that helps offset the cost of what the HOPE grant does not pay. So it's a, a, a normal welding student. I looked at one of our welding students, and, and they had, by the time they got through with the program, they, there was about a five hundred dollar, five hundred fifty dollars that was a cost to them, but with Mr. Young's help, Ms. Smith's help here, we've, we have had some money. So, so far, our option B students have not had to pay out of pocket because a lot of times, some of these students will be, you know, come from single-parent families or whatever, and it, and if they were having to come up with this money, it would make the difference of them not pursuing this program, and we don't want that to happen. So, you know, I'm always going to be on the lookout, should we have to make other adjustments, you know, trying to secure some money and some funds to help those students. And, and here's the, here's the part that even parents, when I start talking to students, and students, of course, they like this, the option B high school requirements is, it's only going to make them take two E.L.A. courses, and it must include American Lit, one of them must be American Lit, so it's going to be ninth-grade Lit or World Lit, whichever one that is being taught for that incoming freshman at that time. And then math courses, it has to have algebra one. I typically, if I can, if I'm in contact with that student, I want that student to take geometry. Geometry is normally going to be a more skills-based, application-based math for that student, so that's, that's going to help them. And then the science courses can be any science, but it has to include biology, in which you see the ones that must include, those are E.L.C. courses. So those students have to take, they have to participate in the E.L.C. course, and they'll, to have that. And in the social studies, it, the law says that they have to have American government and civics, or it says any two social studies, but normally, they're going to take American government and civics when they first come into high school, and I try to recommend U.S. history because I've got a current batch of option B students that I follow the, the state rules, and American literature was not on there, so they just had to have two E.L.A.s. Well, they got started in the program, and they, the state changed it and said, students now have to have American Lit. Well, I'm instantly on emails to everybody on the state level. When I, these people have met the requirements when they started this program, well, it got no way. Well, it got nowhere and I had to have those students come back into high school and take American Lit. So if, if any other change takes place, I think U S history is going to be that course that they might have to take. So I just try to be proactive on the front side, get them in U S history. So that should that happen, then, then that's been stemmed off on the front side. And, and there's no guarantee, it could be something else, but I think U S history would be the one that would be required. And, and I've said those students can accumulate some, you know, out of pocket expense. They do qualify for HOPE, HOPE and HOPE Career Grant. And then they're not eligible to graduate from high school until they have earned that credential for their program. So once they get their certificates or diploma. And what I like to do when I'm, I, I plan out, we're looking at semesters ahead when we lay out these plans for these students. And I like to go ahead and make sure that student is taking the classes that satisfy those certificates. So that at least that's done. And if something happens later, we've got that as a safety net so that student would still get to graduate. And most of the time those certificates in two semesters, they can get them. So that's, that's on my first list to get that student into. And then once they get beyond that, I want them to get maximum when they're in there. But we do have that safety net should something happen to that student and they're, they're still able to graduate. And they still have those skills that those certificates provide. All right, how did it come about? Twenty fifteen, a Senate Bill Two was passed on the state level. And, and basically what it does is it just created that alternate graduation path. And it was designed to just address the, the skill trade needs across the state. You know, business and industry obviously is, is, you know, pounding on your, on your legislature continuously as they should be. And, you know, wanting something to happen to address the skills trades need. And, and so SB Two, Senate Bill Two was passed in twenty fifteen. When Senate Bill Two was passed, even me reading through it and being very knowledgeable of what, what was in it, it was still very confusing and it was a, it was almost, it was fearful to get a student in it because there was, there was question marks around everything. And so it, it didn't really take off like it should. But then in twenty twenty, a House Bill Four Forty Four passed. And it clarified, it basically replaced the Senate Bill Two. And, and it sort of cleaned up everything to make it more, more clear to, you know, what was going to be needed on, for that student. And, and then, and that's when it said, you know, students are either option A or they option B. So it made that a much better path too, especially for the students to be able to, to choose. All right, some of the programs that students take is, is, on the local side here, cosmetology, criminal justice, and criminal justice, a student can take that and be one hundred percent online. You do not have to physically walk in a, a classroom to take criminal justice, which, you know, was a little odd to me that that can happen. But they do offer that program a hundred percent online. Air conditioning technology, welding, automotive collision repair, automotive technology. Those are the courses that are here local and that we have students involved with now. Now, in May, at, when graduation comes around, we will have a, it's current Pickens High School option B senior. He will be graduating Pickens High School and Chattahoochee Tech in the air conditioning technology diploma. So he's, he's completed his program at Canton and did very well in that program. So that's, that's really good. We'll have one that will be graduating automotive technology. I'm going to have six that will be graduating from the welding department in May as long, as well as, as Pickens High. And one of those will have an applied technical management associate degree as well. So he will be graduating on time and have his welding diploma, his high school diploma and associate degree in applied technical management in one top. Now, they started, they started prior to a thirty hour cap. So they basically got grandfathered in. Or it would be very hard to accomplish this today to, to get that associate degree. It could happen, but it would be a har, a little bit harder now. And then I changed this number up because it has changed today. I've got two students that have already, oh, they're, one's going to apply, but I've already spoken to the family. And they will begin the cosmetology department as option B students in the fall. So that they're the first students that have been able to take advantage of it in cosmetology. And they, you know, people, the students come all the time wanting to take cosmetology. Cosmetology do not offer, they start cohorts and they start in the fall. You take every course that you have to have in the fall, spring and summer. And they just start the group and they go that full year. And it's, it's impossible to get a conventional high school student in that program. But these two students here that are going to be starting there, they were, this is what we want to do. Parents were supportive of it and so they'll, they'll get to do that. All right, now what I'm here to ask of y'all is obviously, you know, we, with, with that Senate Bill Two, which became option B, the, the graduation requirements that we have here, board policy I H F. And, and this is a little bit, I won't say confusing at all, but what I want to ask the board and, and the board attorney to look at is just to make sure that our board policy is in compliance with the state regulations for option B. And, and I've, I've confirmed this multiple times with the state. You're telling me that these students do not fall under a twenty-three state graduation requirements? And they have confirmed that, no, once they, once they meet the requirements, which it can be as little as nine high school require, you know, credits. And then, once they complete, whether this, whether it be the certificates or the diploma, that's approved. Then that student meets all the graduation requirements for it. So I just don't want, and right now I don't have a student that's, that's at that point. I just want us to be proactive here because I know it's a plus in cases where we have a student who may be low on credits. And could we resort to option B to get that student graduated and not really have to worry about that final number? You know, put them in classes that might not benefit them at all. So, you know, that, that's our, that's our current ball of policy here. And then I put the, the Georgia Department of Education dual enrollment board rule on here. And it basically shows you everything that I just said up there. And down to bottom, you know, a student who meets the requirements of that section shall be deemed to admit all graduation requirements of the state board of education and shall not be subject to any courses or assessments otherwise required for purposes of graduation. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we're clean. I know Mr. Wallace and I have talked about, you know, how it states that in the, in the Pickens High School handbook and stuff. And, and that would just be an easy rewrite there, but just make sure we're in compliance.
And, and I'll tell you if you're going to cover this in a minute, but from everything I have heard and read and gathered, I, I sense that there's a lot of discussions of tightening the option A route. And, and who would qualify or limiting some of those hours of eligibility and things based on the cost that the state is seeing. But seeing continued expansion of option B because of the business community and the people that need folks going into the skilled trade. Is that what you're seeing, hearing? And, you know, how is that going to impact those people?
You know, I'm not at the, I'm not at the dual enrollment every day, I care, but I watch every single day. I want to know what's being introduced and everything on that education side, I'm clicking. You know, how is this impacting us? So I, so I want to be right there and see it. And in that way, if I see something I like, you know, I'm quick to get on the email and start voicing my concern. So, so I do look, look at it and, and Mr. Wallace and I have watched this take place. And, and I share with him, you know, it's a day to day. And, you know, something will happen at some point. It's going to have to, because when I show you this data that I'm going to show you, it's, it's got to, something will have to happen. And it will come, it will, it will happen because of the cost is what's going to happen. Now, and, and just to give a quick oversight of what we did here for eight, for House Bill Four Forty Four, it says no later than the first day of February each year, each local high school shall provide general information about the program. And we far exceed that. I always have, you know, sessions in September. I had three sessions in February of this year. So we're far exceeding it. All the information with dual enrollment is on our website. You know, I always encourage the students to come to the informational sessions as opposed to go to the website. I like to talk to the people. I like to answer questions. I like to emphasize the important things that they might not be able to get on a, a PowerPoint. And then of course students, we have students for this year, twenty-one, twenty-two. You know, we've had students, obviously Chattahoochee Tech is our number one. We have more, more students there, but we've had, and currently have Reinhardt, University of North Georgia, Kennesaw, Dalton State and Young Harris. So, you know, pretty much a, a large realm of students. Now, the reason we have been able to tap into these colleges is during COVID, when they dropped their SAT requirements, you know, it pretty much opened the door for those students to get in. And, you know, with these laws and with these regulations, and, and I said, Mr. Wallace and I have talked about this many times. When we start talking about, or like with the question you had, when we start talking about regulate something, control something, those are terms I'm a little nervous with because we can't tell a student they can or they can't. You know, there's not really a checkoff box. Now, obviously that we see indicators that we tell them, you know, we would recommend if you're going to take English eleven oh one, that you're successful in the same, so, you know, English at the high school and honors or AP, you know, I want to see that student. But that's only my recommendation. I cannot predict the future. I don't know their success or failure because I've seen it go both ways. I've seen students that I thought this student will never make it. Yet they do. And then I've seen students that I wouldn't have worried about for a second who have to withdraw. So we don't know what life, those are people that can impact those things. And it becomes very touchy when we start saying, yes, you can and you can't. So, and this, I, I've put these numbers together here to go back. I went back ten years and I got, I got data that goes back farther than that. But just looking at the, the dual enrollment students going all the way back from fall to twenty twelve, you can see how those have cre, increased down to spring of twenty-two. You know, the total, total students there are seventy-nine. And I made a couple of this, of just highlight areas there, fall of seventeen. Pickens High School hired Ms. Toss, Margaret Toss, as a counselor. And she was very, she came to Dawson County and they had a great dual enrollment program out there. So those numbers instantly went up because she was able to, she knew the regulations. She knew how to get those students in there. And, and so that moved up pretty fast. And then on the, if you look at core students, you know, obviously it had just been basically core students from all the way back. If you look at the skilled step trade students, this was what, this is the reason I ran for school board anyway, because I knew we were not putting enough students in skilled trade area. And you could see the zeros down through there. So when we got down to there, I was working on the ChatTech side at this time. We got some courses offered for first block. We made some adjustments at ChatTech. We was able to take those numbers from zero, we went to fourteen, thirteen. And then summer, you know, was off there. But then we kept consistent numbers there. And then, and then fall of nineteen, and I'm not giving myself credit for this by no means, but that's when I went to work at the high school. And we went, we jumped on up then there to, to sixty-six. And then, but if you see our core numbers continued to rise. Now, obviously the, the COVID and fall of twenty was that next semester after COVID. It just sort of stayed, stayed, stayed plain. And, and I literally was telling students because we didn't know what was going to happen even at that time in the fall of twenty. That I told them, I said, look, I said, you know, you may sign up for an home, for an in-person class, but it may instantly go to a online. So I was warning students because I typically am going to promote in-class as opposed to online. But I, I felt like I probably talked some out of it because I just didn't know. And I didn't want them to start down the road and have issues. So our numbers just sort of stayed the same. But that's long gone now, as you can see with that, that seventy-nine there, the total. But our technical numbers are still saying, you know, not, not hardly as good as they need to be, or I don't think so. Total courses, you can see at the bottom where we are, one hundred and eighty courses total. A hundred and thirty-nine of those are core, forty-one of those are skilled trade courses. And those skills, uh, skilled trade courses, those option B students, they're maxing out every semester. So that makes those core, those total course numbers higher on the technical side. But you don't have a lot of students doing it, but they're maxing out there. Total credit hours, you can see we're at, at this semester at five hundred and seventy-two total credit hours that are being generated by those students, a hundred and fifty-three of those being skilled trade. And, and here's the part that, that really, that I want you to see is looking back at just these last few semesters here. And I just took the bottom of that previous screen. And if you look down at where I've got written, fall twenty-two at the bottom down there, I have, and this was a Friday, and this number increases every single day. This number increases. I, I had already spoken to, or students had, or, or students that sent me email, eighty students that would be seniors next year that said, I'm interested in dual enrollment. You know, put my name down on, on the list. I have a board in my room where they can physically walk in. Okay, eighty of those, seventy of upcoming juniors and then forty-four of, of the upcoming sophomores. So sophomores can only take technical skilled trades. They cannot take any kind of, of, you know, core classes at that point. It's not allowed. But, so with that forty-four, all that tells me is those students will come back next year and there'll be more. So, and, and what I did is I took my current dual enrollment seniors there, that's just up there. There's thirty-six of current seniors. And they will prob, they're probably going to stay, our upcoming seniors. They will probably stay in dual enrollment, the program because they typically don't come out once they get started. They like it. And then if I just cut those numbers of the student have, that have currently expressed interest in half. So if I take those thirty-six students and, and let's just say forty of upcoming seniors and thirty-five upcoming juniors. And I've highlighted in yellow there, you know, we could possibly have as many as a hundred and twenty-five. And I'm speculating, I just cut that number in half. I don't know what that could be, but it's still a large number. And to go from sixty-four, seventy-nine, and, and I feel extremely confident it will be over a hundred, you know, it will over a hundred. And, and if you're looking at it as far as how many students is that in comparison to students we have at the high school? Of our two hundred and sixty-five juniors, that's basically a third of our students in that, in that grade level. And then upcoming sophomores, you know, a quarter of that. That's, that's a large number of our population that's interested. And as of right now, we do not have a method of saying yes, no, you know. And, and I saw this coming sort of in the fall. I thought, well, yes, there's a lot of people interested even in the fall. And I said, if they all come back, once the additionals come back in the spring, it's going to be a lot. And so, so right now it's consumed me. I mean, I am literally consumed and I'm nervous, you know, on how to address all of them. Because if you, if you have one, and all of them are worthy of being looked at when they come and say, because I don't know, I don't know if they're saying it because they know this is exactly what they want to do. Or is it going to be that they just won't get out of high school for some reason? But they all, if they make the, and I'm, and I'm using requirements lightly. If, if they, if the, the college does not put any kind of, of, you know, minimum entrance in there, then that student has all rights, legal rights to apply. And if they're accepted, they have the right to pass or fail. I mean, it's, you know, it's, that's their right. So, you know, looking at this, it's definitely, now, you know, for me, I'm about the option B students. And, and I like helping all of them. Don't get me wrong, I like helping all of them. The things on the technical side that I would like for us as, as a county to do, I'm not getting to do those things, you know, or put any time in those things that I think I have, you know, a, a little bit more strength in. I, I love all these students that come to me. I love helping them. But, you know, we got to look at what, you know, and be, obviously this is going to be a reactive. What do we do now? We got to react to this, but we need to be proactive too on what we need to do. And what you said, you know, if every school is going through this here, the state will begin to look at this. And it'll happen, it'll have to happen. Unless it's going to happen this year, we still got to deal with this, you know, for current time. And, and we don't want to leave anybody out of it because I would take advantage of it. And I would recommend anybody's, you know, should take advantage of it. I, I don't know how you wouldn't. So, you know, that's a, something that we need to look at. And, you know, do I have the answers? No, I don't have the answer. But I think as a district, we need to address this and set some kind of, you know, what, what do we want this to be? How do we want to look at it? And how are we going to adjust to, you know, the advisement process? Because these students are having to be advised and a lot of them, when they come, you know, there's some things I want them to have. Some things they have to have. They have, before they could take the college math, they have to have Algebra One, Algebra Two and Geometry. So I don't, you know, I can tell them that if they haven't had that. So when next year it comes to me now and they haven't had that, I say, all right, next semester you request geometry. Get that out of your way, get American Lit out of the way, which is an E O C course. Get that out of your way. Get American Lit out of the way, which is an ALC course. When they come back to me next time and they say, I got what, I got done what you wanted me to do, then, you know, you've got to start helping them in it. And like I said, even in all my information sessions, I put recommendations that if you don't have, you know, if you don't have AP or honors in that, in that subject area, I don't recommend it. And I say, recommend, but, you know, I can't tell them yes or no.
Sounds like some exciting opportunities for I'm.
It's great opportunities. I could not imagine a student having more than what they have right now. I could imagine that they get more opportunities right now than they've ever had to do.
I want mainly some comments. I'm going to get a little history here. Because I was here when this started and Sue and Steve were as well. In 2019, we had discussions that we felt like we were missing an area of students. And we were missing, not only an area of students, but we were missing, or not getting in the advisement process as well as we could with all the other issues that guidance counselors have to deal with on a daily basis. And we made a decision as a board at that time to create a position. And I'm not normally in favor of creating new positions, but we, we felt it was well worthwhile. And I'm really encouraged by these numbers, which has proven that this is well worthwhile. Because I know you don't like to brag on yourself, and I'm not very good at math. But I think depending on what year, what time of year, spring or fall semester, it was a 50 to 100% increase in students dual enrolled now compared to when you started in that role. And a lot of that credit goes to you. And, and this is an area we need to be hitting, especially on those option B. We got to keep increasing that. And so, I, I'm excited. It's encouraging for me to see that this is an area I feel like, not to pat ourselves on the back, but an area that it is, but neat to see that we made that investment and where it has come. And I'll also say, in these roles, we don't get, people reach out to us often to brag on people. And I've had multiple people, students, parents, faculty brag on the work you do and how you help students daily, trying to get them on the path they need to be. And I know I'm not the only board member that's heard compliments on you. So, I thank you very, very much. And I'll also add that I think this is an area we need to potentially look at making further investment, investment this budget cycle if we can. I'm not saying getting another person like you, but getting you some form of help because the dual enrollment program is expanding greatly as we see here. And I don't think it's going to do anything but continue to grow. And I also feel strongly that there's one of you and thousands of them. And we need to be hitting students early, not only at the high school. We need to be capturing them at the junior high level for starters and maybe even younger. But we need, we need to get, capture these students early and get them on the path they need to be successful. So, I would be interested in us looking at some of that when it comes budget time too.
Well, we're thinking along the same lines. Mr. Bell, I would like to invite you, we don't have a date yet, but I would like to invite you to our next work session so that we can sit and talk further about the needs and how we can look to the future, be proactive, and put some procedures in place, perhaps personnel in place, to meet the needs as we grow this program. Okay, so we'll talk about that in the future if you're willing to.
Yes, absolutely. I kind of appreciate the kind of words I did. And, and I know when I interviewed for this position, I said, if I can't do this position, you won't have to tell me I'm not doing it. I'll know I can't do it and I'll leave myself. So, I don't like doing things in secret. I don't want to be a person that's trying to do things in secret. I want people to see what we're up against. And, and, and obviously, I think we do need to invest in, in how we do advisement. And I'm, I'm the first one to say, hold me accountable for it. If I say we need to do something that don't work out, I'll take the heat for it because I, I see how this benefits these students. And it's not easy. And I don't think that, I, I, counselors, we have great counselors at high school. They, they work hard and they care about our kids. And I don't think that, I think this needs to be separate. And, and I know when I was on the board, I looked at every county around. I wanted to see in this area, how do we compare? But yeah, I, I would rather be looked at as about, as in, what are we doing different from other counties to prepare our students for truly to be career rated when they come out or, or college rated? You know, and I'm not, I don't want, I don't want the students not to have option A availability, but option B is what we need to focus on. And, you know, I would like to see us have an LPN or RN at the high school teaching CNA. I do not think, and I'm not, this is no, no reflection on our current teachers that, you know, healthcare teachers. They do great at the high school. But if we were able to give these students a CNA before they left the high school, and I have that through Chat Tech, but it is very hard to schedule these students. So, I see these numbers and, and we're not, and healthcare is one of our biggest needs in, in any town USA. And we would never put enough out there, but I don't want us, especially our local positions, I don't want them to be taken by people outside of county. I want us as a high school, look at this and provide some of this locally. It will, it will help them. Everybody, everybody goes in healthcare. If they're going to be a nurse, that CNA. You know, nursing is a competitive program again. CNA gives you points on that competitive worksheet. So, we would be doing nothing but service to those students coming out.
Absolutely. Four-year degree is not for everybody. And I would always tell my students, you know, you go into a, a technical skill and you're going to be making a whole lot more than I do.
Yeah, it's good. It's good. And I think we're on the track. And, and I'm glad to hear that y'all are supportive. And absolutely, I'll be anywhere you need me, but he.
No, we're on the date. That's a great thing.
Daniel, you know, you know that I support vocational, I've been very strong in vocational. One thing I like to point out, people who might not be as keen on vocational with the dual enrollment, those kids can still get college credit hours. And, and if you want to put a dollar value on it, look in any colleges catalog and see what they charge per credit hour. And, and it's a huge savings to families. If they can get any, any of the college course for dual enrollment.
Yeah, and, and it's also, once they get in, it's a lot easier for them to stay in it than it would be a lot of times if they leave that high school. And they don't have a team of people that will support them at that point. It's a lot harder for them to go walk in that door. But if I walk them in that door and help them take care of the things, you know, surrounding that, then, then it's a lot easier to stay in there. So, you know, as I was preparing this, I got out my magic eight ball to see if I was telling the truth or if Daniel was lying. And of course, you can see it didn't tell the lie, so.
Sue, I'd like to say one thing real quick. I ran for the board because I didn't feel like our county offers enough vocational. I graduated at Tennessee high school that had the largest vocational program in the state and was ready to take my electrician's license when I graduated. I wasn't old enough, but as soon as I turned 18, I was able to take it. Till you've sat on this side of the table, you don't understand how hard it is to get things to happen in the district sometimes. And Daniel sat up here and he knows. And we all sit here and say, we'd like this and we'd like that. And it never happens because it just can't happen. But Daniel was a, a easy decision for me to make. And I think in my four-year tenure on the board, nearly four-year tenure, Sue and Tucker, I think that Daniel was the best decision I've made so far.
I appreciate that.
I, I'd just like to say, thank you for everything you do. We got a huge compliment on you about two weeks ago. And they said that during COVID and during everything, when you were sick and you had COVID, you still returned your emails. You still returned your phone calls. Nobody has to wait on you to call them. You call them automatically.
That was not a surprise.
No. And I just want to say that you're the best, one of the best decisions I've made on this board.
I appreciate that. I do appreciate it. And I didn't come here for that. I don't, I'm not in my position for, for me or for any game myself. We got a lot of opportunities here that we need to take advantage of. And, you know, it, it made all the difference in my life, and I know it can for other students. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Daniel.
That concludes my reports. Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much. All right, let's go through our action items. First one is the approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel Action Report 1 as presented?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Smith made that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
All right, that's Mr. Green. Mr. Green made that second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay, we have three. Any abstentions? Two. All in favor is three, two abstentions. Personnel action report is approved as presented. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel Action Report Number 2 as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Smith makes that motion.
I'll say.
Stereo.
I'll say.
Hey, Mr. Holland makes that second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Personnel action number two is approved as presented. The next action item is approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports Ms. Smith presented?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Gartrill.
Say.
Made that motion and Mr. Smith seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The next action item is the approval of the resolution to approve the option for state health benefit plan for board members. Mr. Yan, will you please give an explanation of what this resolution will allow?
I will, Madam Chair. I'd like to read into the record for board approval of resolution that will allow our board members the ability to opt into the state health benefit plan as do our employees. This resolution will also allow the system to pay a share of that monthly cost based on the maximum amount established by the state. While board members serve in a difficult job for $100 per meeting, this would be an added optional benefit for this board as well as future boards. I'd like to also thank Ms. Smith and Mr. Landrum for their assistance in researching and crafting this document. And so, I would like to read the resolution into the record at this time. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Pickens County that its members be eligible to participate in the state health benefit plan, specifically the plan for public school employees established under Georgia Code. Be it further resolved that the rate of participation for each board member that elects to participate shall be at the maximum rate established pursuant to said plan this 10th day of March, 2022. And I'm asking for board approval of that resolution this evening, Madam Chair.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to approve the option for state health benefit plan for board members as presented?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. Gartrill makes the motion. Do I hear a second? Mr. Holland seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. The next action item is the approval to purchase school buses. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of six school buses for our system at a cost of $672,000 from Thomas Built Buses?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Smith makes that motion.
I'll say.
Mr. Gartrill seconded that motion. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This is just continuation of our efforts to keep a, a modern, safe fleet for students. None of our buses are over 10 years old, and it's this plan that we use that keeps it that way. So, we know that all our students are in a, in a quality bus.
And as a, from a comfort point of view, they are all air conditioned as well. All in favor? Five oh. Motion passes. The next action item is the approval of the Pickens Junior High School Greenhouse GMP. Do I have a motion to approve Pickens Junior High School Greenhouse GMP for $269,253 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll say.
Mr. Holland makes that motion. Mr. Gartrill seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make a comment. I'd be, I would be remiss if I didn't express a little frustration. So, I, I, and I do so to not, to not reflect negatively upon anybody. I, I do it in hopes to be some encouraging advice on future projects. And do not get me wrong, I am thrilled at the, at the junior high facility and at the high school facility that's come to be. We have worked hard since we came on this board to get those facilities. So, it's nice to see them come along because it has been a little frustrating at times. I feel like we, we ran into some hurdles and speed bumps and not moved things as quickly as I would have liked to see. And that little continues to be the case. We, unless something changed this week, that junior high facility has been constructed. We still don't have any activities going on in there. Still don't have students or anything in there. We still don't have everything in that facility that they need. We're still waiting on some stuff. And this greenhouse is another delay that could have been avoided. This should have been included nine months ago or so when we originally approved that GMP for that junior high ag facility. But it wasn't and thought, there were thoughts they could go another route and that didn't come to pass. And so, now, we're having to kind of do this after the fact and delay and probably go miss this growing season and probably much more costlier than what it could have been. So, I, I just, I wanted to express a little frustration there. And I want to say, please don't take it wrong. I'm very grateful for what we've been able to do. But we invest a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money in these facilities and to try and provide these opportunities and services for our students and our staff. And so, and we have a lot of folks that we also give a lot of money to, to help us in those processes. And so, I think we need to try very diligently to make sure in the future, in future projects, that we have, you know, things happen, but let's try our best to have them right from, from the start so we don't have to do these, to try and prevent some of these delays and increased costs later down the road.
Um, now, I, I may have misunderstood. My understanding was that we don't have anything going on at the, at the ag facility just now because we're going towards the end of the ag season and that some of the, some of the livestock and whatever there at the end of their season. My understanding was there was no need to move them from one facility to the next. Is that what I heard?
I think that, yes, that is correct.
So, that's why there's nothing going on really, because they kept them where they were instead of moving them over to the next one. Is that right?
Yes, and I agree with the livestock aspect, but.
Now, the greenhouse issue, my understanding was it was going to cost half of what the new greenhouse was going to cost us to move, to move the old greenhouse to the new facility. So, instead of moving the old greenhouse, then we were going to buy a new greenhouse. And then by the time, when we, with the suppliers and the, and the cost of, the cost of new construction going up and all of that that we had trouble with. But that's why there was the delay and why the cost went up. Is that, did I understand it correctly?
Well, my, my recollection, and I made comments about when we were going over this GMP originally, do we not need a new greenhouse currently and go in and include it while we're having this expense? And we were told, no, we have an adequate greenhouse that we can relocate for very little cost.
Right, that was the original thought, yeah.
Right. And I don't know if prices were not gathered then. I don't know what happened. All I know is after this facility was constructed, then we were told, well, no, that can't happen. Or if it does, it's going to cost even more than a new one would cost. And so, I don't, I just don't know why, why we did not know that or why we were confused on that nine months to 12 months ago. I guess that's my point on that.
I would like, I would like to interject too. I don't think we even got one person that was willing to bid moving the greenhouses due to the, and the age and the.
And I, I was told that too this past month. I guess my point is, why didn't we realize that and know that nine, 12 months ago when we were having that conversation?
Well, there, you know, we can worry about.
Stacy, you, you had reached out.
Yeah, I reached out to companies several times and what, get any response? And there's only two major greenhouse companies in the southeast and that would do something this size. I'll take the blame for it because I probably didn't push them enough. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't run from not taking the blame for that because. because I did ask them several times, wasn't getting a response. And finally, when they sent a crew down to look at moving that one, they said with the age of the, the existing greenhouses, they round tight, they downbuild them as an A-frame, they were, they would not move it. They said they would not take the chance of moving it because they'd end up having to replace everything and it would cost us more than it was worth. At that time, I started asking for prices from the two manufacturers. One manufacturer bought the other one out. So we ended up with getting a price from this, the greenhouse company, which bought Jader Luna out. And they were two, two big players in the thing. I was extremely upset when I started seeing prices. Didn't even want to bring it to you because I knew what you were going to say and what was going on. I can't help that part because of the economy right now. And the COVID and all that made all these prices and supply and demand go crazy on us. But as far as, I really felt like I could get that thing moved. And I'm disappointed I couldn't. And it's my fault because I thought I could get it moved. But it ended up in the end, I could not get it moved. I had moved one before. I had done it, but this one, they just couldn't do it. I just, you know, this is my fault on that.
No, it's not. There were forces at work that you couldn't have any control over.
It's my fault for not getting that done quicker after I seen they couldn't move it. So it is. I'll take the blame for that. I couldn't get it into the GMP because of the time that we were trying to divide, develop that barn and do it, I was trying to rush and get that in because we'd stopped, you know, several times and backed up and funded. And I tried to get the GMP to, so we could get the barn built as soon as possible. And I could not work the greenhouse people into the price. That one was, that was probably one of the deals where I didn't have a lot of control over. But I did have some control over getting a new one started quicker.
Well, I appreciate that. And like I said, my intent's not a big critical.
No, I see.
I'm just, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to make point of my overall perspective and look into the future.
I feel the same way. I felt like I probably did drop the ball on that and I didn't mean to.
And I think, we pushed you very hard.
I'll take some for it. I'm not.
We deserve some blame as well.
Yeah.
I'll take the blame.
We've already taken it.
I take it all anyway, all the time.
I'm not taking any of the blame.
I don't take blame. I just learn from it and move on.
That's right.
I think with the year that we, the year, the last two years we've had, I think you've done a fantastic job. If the greenhouse is the only big snafu we've had, I think we're doing pretty well. But anyway, thank you for your comments. I appreciate your frustration and I honor that. I do. I'm glad you spoke up. Anything else you want to add for that?
Well, I have a list, but no.
You just bring your list and bring it on.
I won't, I won't divorce my full list for a hundred.
Okay. Save it for next month. Okay. All right, all in favor? All right, five oh. I sure enjoy working with you guys.
Never know.
There really isn't. There really isn't. I do enjoy it. All right, the next item on our action items is the approval of Pickens High School Stadium Repair. Do I have a motion to approve the stadium repairs at Pickens High School at a cost of $74,340 as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Smith makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gartrill makes the second. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to stress, Stacy already touched on it, this is not just a cosmetic move. There's some water leakage underneath the concrete there that could potentially have some structural problems. So this is, this is structural as well as cosmetic all at once.
I believe this update will save us money, big money in the future.
That's what, that's what Mr.
I'd like to make a complaint that we didn't get this done sooner.
As Mr. Gillis said.
Speed of government, yeah.
As Mr. Gillis said, this is to prevent costly repairs later on. This is a proactive move, really. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The motion passes unanimously. Next item is the approval of the SWSS contract amendment. Mr. Young, will you explain what this amendment will allow?
I will, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, in 2016, school systems were given the option of becoming a charter system or a strategic waiver system. Our board at the time chose for us to become a strategic waiver district. This gives us the ability to waive certain state requirements for added flexibility in return for using that flexibility to positively impact our accountability data. Due to COVID, the State Department of Education has determined that recent accountability data is not reliable. Therefore, they are asking that the board approve an amendment to our contract that extends it by two years. And so I will now read the amendment into the record and ask for the board's approval. And this is a little beat plan. State Board of Education and the Pickens County Board of Education agreed to amend the strategic waiver school system contract for Pickens County schools. This amendment, which shall become effective upon the last signature, shall be referred to as Amendment Number Four. Whereas the State Board and the local board entered into the contract for the operation of a strategic waiver school system beginning on or about July 1, 2016, to maximize academic and financial accountability. Whereas the contract was previously amended on or about August 27, 2020. And whereas the local board approved by majority vote to amend the contract to add two years to the contract term. Now therefore, the State Board and the local board mutually agree to amend the contract as follows. The contract is hereby amended to insert the following as new section 20 to read as follows. This contract shall become effective on July 1, 2016, and with the February 2022 amendment, due to the unforeseen circumstances as described by the State Board of Education, which resulted in only two years of accountability data during the five-year performance term, will end on June 30, 2024. Except as amended herein, the contract and all previous amendments are unaffected and shall continue in full force and effect in accordance with its terms. If there is a conflict between this amendment and the contract or any earlier amendment, the terms of this amendment will prevail. And Madam Chair, at the conclusion upon board approval, I will need your signature on this resolution. And so I'm asking for board approval this evening.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
All right, Mr. Green and Mr. Smith? Mr. Green made the motion to approve, to approve the strategic waiver school system contract amendment as presented. And Mr. Smith seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is five oh. The motion passes unanimously. The next, next, next action item. This is a request for approval for early release day on the last day of school. I believe this request is being made, as it was last year, to enable Pickens High School and the Transportation Department to prepare for the graduation ceremony later that night. Do I have a motion to approve an early release day on the last day of school, May 27, 2022?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Smith makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Holland makes the second. Is there any further discussion?
Can I make a complaint about this one?
Certainly.
We did this last year. What if, no.
All in favor? Motion passes five oh. Mr. Holland, I can't protect you at the meeting. You're on your own.
I was going to say, we can go rumble days all over again if we want to.
You're on your own, Mr. Holland.
I'll stop now. I'm ahead.
The next action item is the approval of MOU with Bernal University. Is this a basic MOU allowing Bernal students to observe in our classrooms, Mr. Young?
It is, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to approve the MOU with Bernal University as presented?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Green? The second is from Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh. The next action item is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 10, 2022, called meeting at 5:00 PM? And the February 10, 2022 regular meeting at 6:00 PM?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Smith makes that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Green makes the second. Seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh. The next action item is approval of surplus. The technology department has a list of damaged and outdated items to be surplused. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus submitted from the technology department? Okay, Mr. Gartrill makes that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smith seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I did appreciate that the documentation was properly filled out this time. So I could look at everything. Thank you, Patrick. And all the columns were filled out, you know, wasn't a lot of blanks this time, so.
Mr. Green is happy, duly noted. All in favor? Five oh.
There was, there was a lot of Apple TVs on there. I was curious why there were so many Apple TVs. You want to know why?
We know why.
We have a new warehouse, man.
No, don't hit on him. No, no.
No, 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 no. It's a good thing.
All right, the motion passes five oh. Next action item is public participation. Mr. Young, have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
We have not, Madam Chair.
Okay. The next action item is board comments. Sam, what have you think they'd like to say?
I think I've said more than enough. People want me to hear it today, so.
Nope. Anybody, feel free.
I'm grateful for the gifts that we received. Appreciation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was very nice.
We do appreciate that. That's very nice. I am grateful to be on the board, grateful that I can serve my community. All right, the next action item. Hold the applause. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I made the motion.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Gartrill has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:23 PM.